If you could take your seats, please. I'd like to call this workshop to order. Welcome back to your City Commission chambers. It is April 10th at 1:00 in the afternoon. We have the workshop dealing with the airport. We have a short agenda, but let me go ahead and ask the City Manager, do we have any agenda modifications?
No, sir.
Excellent. So, let's move right into citizen input. If you want to speak on this particular agenda item, I encourage you to fill out a speaker form and turn it in. Everybody will have an opportunity to speak that wants to speak today. So, if you haven't had a chance, go ahead and fill one out and get it to us. Mr. Cook, we'll go ahead and start off.
Thank you, Mayor. The first speaker we have will be Bennett Napier. I will ask him and our other speakers to speak to the microphone right here in the center of the room. You'll have three minutes for your remarks. If you'd give us your name and address for the record, that would be great. And I will let you know when you're getting close to three.
Very good. Bennett, it is great to see you. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Commission. Bennett Napier, business address is 325 John Knox Road in Tallahassee and also residential address 1801 Eastern Forest Drive here in Tallahassee. To Mayor Daley and members of the Commission, first, we want to thank all of you on the Commission and staff that were able to attend the recent Greenville, South Carolina trip. As a small business owner and Chamber Executive Committee member, I am sorry that I was not able to attend myself last week. I was called to fulfill some other demands with my day job at an out-of-state interview with the Prospect Trade Association that we're trying to relocate here to Tallahassee, which would be a multimillion-dollar trade association that would bring their infrastructure and operations from Philadelphia to Tallahassee.
Wonderful.
So, for the Commissioners that don't know me, Partners in Association Management will give you a little better background on our company and why I'm here today on this particular topic. We're a professional service firm, and our core business is providing a turnkey staffing solution for state, regional, and trade associations and certification programs. And we've been doing that for 21 years here in Tallahassee. And our service includes effectively providing within the confines of our company where somebody on our staff serves as CEO of the respective organizations that we manage and service the headquarters for, including meeting planning, communications, all of the above, that any function that you see, any associations here in town, which we have almost 700, as you know, we do what they do. We just do it for more than one group. And they're also outside of the state of Florida. So, I started my own company in 1997 here in Tallahassee. We have 42 employees here. And effectively, just to give you some perspective in terms of economics and why I'm here today, I'll get to that in a moment. We have, our lowest starting wage is $30,000. Our average wage in our firm is $66,000, just to give you some perspective, which is, I think, somewhat unique for a service firm. So, today's workshop, obviously, the topic is very important to you. It's very important to me and our company personally. And so, I want to give you some perspective of why I'm coming on this particular topic. In 2018, our staff flew approximately 1.1 million air miles out of Tallahassee Airport. In 2018, I represent about 185,000 of those miles last year. And that's effectively during the course of our history, based on the client mix that we have, because we do meetings all around the country and some out of the country as well. That's been pretty much the average for the last 20 years of our business. And I can personally attest that the current airport, in terms of constructs, in terms of business travel, have resulted in missed opportunities for additional meetings that we could bring to Tallahassee. On an annual basis, our company puts on over 90 workshops, everything from a 50-person continuing education workshop to 2,500-person exhibits and annual conferences in those types of meetings.
You're about two minutes and 45.
Two minutes, okay. Meaning, I've got 15 seconds?
I can give you 20 seconds.
All right. So, let me give you, real quick, I'll make sure to stay on time. So, just one thing I do want to mention, during 15 years of our history, one of our clients was the Florida Aviation Aerospace Alliance. So, during that course of working with that particular organization, our company had, obviously, some very subject matter expertise in this area. And just what I can share with you between my personal flying experience from a business standpoint and our association management experience working with that particular organization and their mission, we want to share with you that we urge you today to approve an unbiased and comprehensive study that would provide a structure of governance that would bring forward the long-term positive impacts for a regional economic asset like the airport. We should be planning five to 10 to 15 years out and not just 12 months out. And we appreciate your consideration today.
Thank you, Bennett. Really appreciate it. And thank you, by the way, for utilizing Tallahassee International Airport. We appreciate it.
Next is Sun Suter, if I have that correct?
No.
No?
What did you say? Sun?
Yeah.
Scott.
Got it.
Yeah.
Just like I said, Scott.
Mr. Suter.
Sun. Would you pass these out? I only have 10.
Absolutely, I will. And he'll be followed by Darwin Gamble.
I've got 30. You said 30?
Three minutes.
Oh, three, okay.
Three minutes. Thank you, Mr. Suter. How are you doing? Your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Scott Suter on Wind Song Drive behind Lowe's, no, behind Home Depot. And I've only been in the city now for eight months, moving in from the outskirts. Jefferson County was first, and then Quincy, and now I'm into the city.
Great.
Learning something very new.
Welcome.
Very, very new. Lived in Miami 57 years, so I retired up here in 2003. I'm handing out this document, and I have no idea, other than this is a workshop, and I know what's basically going on, but this is just sort of an idea that we have as pilots here in this vicinity, at this airport. And I am no longer flying, but I do have several thousand hours, but I have stopped flying. But there's 10 items on there, and I just wanted to go over these real quick. The fuels out at the airport are all controlled by one entity, Millionaire. There is no competition. Under that, you see the fuel prices for the area, meaning that pilots that are heading northeast, I'm sorry, northwest or coming to the south, going down south, will not stop in Tallahassee to get fuel because they're smart enough to do their homework and find the cheaper fuel prices in the area instead of stopping here. And you read those prices across the top there. Tallahassee today, as of today, is $543. Quincy, 17, no, not even 17, seven miles to the north, $385. And Perry down south is $416. So, that's quite a bit of big savings, especially if you're putting 60 to 70 gallons of gas in your airplane. Access to the airport by a general aviation airplane, coming in to visit somebody, drop somebody off, or just to come in and maybe go grab a lunch, there's only one place, again, Millionaire. There are fees to do that unless you buy fuel, then they waive those fees. That doesn't seem fair to the general aviation public. So, again, they're going up to Quincy. They're going to Thomas or Bainbridge or Cairo. I almost said Cairo. One thing we also determined, that there's no buses, no buses from there to the city. Somebody gets out of the airport, they got two options, Uber, rental, or three, Uber, rental, or taxi, or four, a friend. So, that's very interesting. I found, you know, Miami has just built the Metro Rail out to the Miami International Airport. And what a terrific, terrific way of spending money. Am I right on time?
You've got about 45 seconds.
No motels, no food anywhere near the airport. We just had an event out there. The Air Force people were there, and they're all asking, where do we go to get some food? There's nothing around here. So, we sent them into town four miles that way or four miles that way. Security, you can't go out there and watch airplanes land. They will run you off. And I have witnesses that have told me that. There's only three carriers, as you all know. And you have eight services to other cities, eight services to, four in Florida and four out of the state. The fares are high, but I'll be honest with you. I got $386 round trip to Portland, Oregon, but I bought the ticket almost seven months ago. But that was a steal because it's normally $700, $800. And the last thing, I spoke to Gainesville people today, which is called the Gainesville Lateral County Airport Authority. They only have the two carriers, United and American. I'm sorry, Delta and American. They got rid of Silver Air. They weren't happy. My name, phone number, email is on the bottom. Any questions before I leave the mic?
Thank you, Mr. Suter. Really appreciate you joining us.
For the record, that's all I wanted.
There we go.
Next speaker then is Darwin Gamble. He'll be followed by Kevin Graham.
Mr. Gamble, I was just saying to you, I think you have 100% attendance record at all meetings and workshops of the City Commission. We appreciate you coming back.
Not quite, Mayor, but thank you very much. Not quite 100%. Darwin Gamble, 1248 Halifax Court. I think your staff has collected enough information to make a feasibility study unnecessary. First of all, there's nothing broken that changing the governance structure of the airport would fix. Second, I think creating a so-called independent airport authority would be a bad idea. What that would do is transfer control of the airport from the elected representatives of the citizens, that's you, to what I think is going to be probably a vehicle for political patronage, a board dominated by members appointed by the governor. That board would not only have control over airport operations, it would also have control over all the revenue generated by the airport. And I don't think it would be as accountable to the citizens as you are. Now, I don't know why you would want to do this, really, especially in light of the war on local government that our governors and the legislature have been waging for the last 20 years. You know what's going on. They've been shipping away at-home rule. They've been passing preemption acts. There is a silly bill over there this time that would even prohibit local governments from regulating vegetable gardens, of all things. In the light of all that, why would you want to give away our airport to a so-called independent authority? Now, I know that recently, some of you were at the Greenville-Spartanburg International Airport. Well, that airport is governed by a commission. All six members of that commission are appointed by the governor of South Carolina. And that commission looks a little bit like the Florida Supreme Court looks now. There's not one African-American on it, not one, in South Carolina. So, please, don't waste your money, or our money, I should say, on a feasibility study, and please, don't give away our airport. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming out.
Next is Kevin Graham, and then Rick Grant.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, staff. Kevin Graham, 3043 Feeny Court. I'd like to extend my thanks to each of you who were able to participate in the Greenville trip. From my experience in development and planning, one of the greatest ways to spur on creativity is to study analogs. And I think Greenville was a great example of that. I'm speaking today in support of our airport as an economic engine in Tallahassee. I don't yet have an opinion of what structure makes the most sense, but I fully endorse a study of this issue to determine the structure that will support our community objectives at the highest level. As some of you are aware, I'm a strong proponent of economic development in South Tallahassee. In a presentation I made a couple of years ago at the Tallahassee Chamber Retreat, I made a statement about building a case for southwest Tallahassee as the next corridor of economic growth in our community. Many of you have heard me talk about FSU's property in southwest Tallahassee. It's in excess of 900 acres. We have a team of people that are regularly and continually planning our campus. We fundamentally believe that planning is critical to long-term success. Our community is no different. So, consider this, within about a two-and-a-half mile span, we have the Tallahassee International Airport, the FAMU FSU College of Engineering, the National High Magnetic Field Laboratory, and Innovation Park. These pillars of our community are prime for building industry and creating jobs. Understanding how these assets can complement each other and work together is critically important. It all starts with a plan. FSU fully supports this study.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Graham. Next speaker?
Next is Rick Grant, and then Steve Bean.
Admiral, good to see you. Thanks for joining us.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners. I'm Rick Grant, 5985 Ochs Bottom Hill Road, Tallahassee. My comments are going to be mostly anecdotal. I recently went to Greenville with many of you. What a great trip that was. We learned a lot, and we need to do something about it. Also sat on the Blue Ribbon Panel some months ago, about four months of studying in Tallahassee. Where are we now? Where are we going and how are we going to get there? What do we want to look like five and 10 years in the future? I don't have a strong opinion on whether we need an independent airport authority or not. What I do have a strong opinion on is we need to make some changes. I'm with Municipal Code Corporation. I've been here for about 21 years, ever since I retired from the Navy. We are a decent-sized business in Tallahassee. We recently sold a part of our business, and we almost lost it. And the reason was ridership out of the airport, the cost and the inability to get to certain places. That was tough. We convinced them that, no, we can handle that some other ways, but it didn't take them long to figure out it's tough to get anywhere from Tallahassee, and it costs a bit too much. Personally, I sometimes go to Jacksonville or Panama City. I try to keep all my business in Tallahassee, but sometimes I can't get there from here, and I've got to do something different. And I hate it when I do, frankly. So, in my opinion, one of the things we need in Tallahassee more than anything else at the airport is ridership. Where do we get ridership? People. Where do we get people? Jobs. How do we get jobs? We bring industry into town. What kind of industries? I don't know yet. But I know we need to do it. I know we need to focus on it. We need to get ridership up. We need to get jobs up. And then the airport will be what we need it to be. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Admiral. Appreciate it.
Next speaker is Steve Bean. He will be followed by Jeff Hendry.
So, your name and address for the record, please.
Steve Bean, 1101 Pine Street. I'm speaking in opposition to the notion of spending $150,000 to help you decide whether to give up control of the airport. I do not doubt that there are ideas out there for improving the way the airport is run, for making it a better airport, more successful, better as a helping Tallahassee grow and be a better community. I don't think that we need to change, to give up control of it in order to get those ideas. Mr. Suter had a list right there. I think if you want outside help in generating ideas, how to make the airport better, spend that $150,000 on a contract for a consultant to study what changes can the city make in the airport, as opposed to whether we should give up control of the airport. If you studied, if you spent $150,000 on how the airport should be controlled and ultimately decided to give up control, the new governing body, probably the first thing they would do would be to spend another $150,000 to figure out how to improve the airport. Skip that step. Just go right to figuring out how to make the airport better. I thought that this notion of adding extra layers of government, independent authorities, independent agencies, I thought that had kind of gone out of style. Many, many conservatives have objected to that in the federal government, all these agencies. Congress should be making decisions. Well, the same thing here. You guys can make decisions. There's no reason why, if we need different or better management, you can't hire a different or better manager and still have him report to the City Manager. So, and if you keep control, you're better able to make sure that the goals of airport management serve the entire community and the city's goals and the City Commission's goals, not some unelected group's goals, which may or may not coincide. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next is Jeff Hendry, and then John McNeil.
Mr. Hendry, good to see you. Your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Jeff Hendry, address 3540 Clifton Drive. I want to echo kind of the remarks of Admiral Grant. I'm not here to talk to you about ridership, though. I'm here to talk about that airport being the greatest asset this community has for economic development and generating jobs. I'm not sure sometimes that we get stuck on governance and governance structure. A lot of assumptions I've heard at the microphone today about how you structure an international independent authority. A lot of flexibility in that, in terms of what the makeup of that committee and what that governing body would be. So, I would caution you against just thinking that's going to be some body that you have absolutely no control over. In terms of economic development, I think it would present a case, possibly, that would enable speed to market. Because when we're looking at recruiting business, be it manufacturing, logistics, and distribution, where that airport is positioning that is ideal for attracting those kinds of jobs. And if you want to look at a strategy for really building up the south side of town and jobs for those folks that could go through technical colleges, through the TCC, through Lively and otherwise, and generate those jobs and skills to be able to work out at that airport with manufacturing-based jobs, with aviation-based jobs, I can tell you that the industry of aviation is one of two or three that are projected to continue to grow over time over the next 10 to 20 years. So, I just leave you with the thought that that is the greatest asset this community has in terms of recruiting business and industry to come. The universities are going to churn that talent out, and there's going to be a lot of opportunity out of that airport if we are strategic in the way that we look at it as an economic engine. When you look at the runway, we don't know how blessed we are to have two runways out there with that kind of length, in terms of being able. And I would just also ask you to take a look a little bit to the west of us, in terms of the defense industry, and how we're not capitalizing on all those defense contracts and all that industry, that we could be a byproduct and a spin-off for those industries. So, again, I think it's worth every dime that you spend $150,000 worth. If it generates a return on investment, I think it will. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hendry. Next speaker?
John McNeil, and then Sue Dick.
Mr. McNeil, congratulations. I know you were just recognized as one of the best in your industry nationwide, and proud to have you in Tallahassee.
Thank you very much. Really enjoyed spending some time with all of you last week in Greenville. I think one of the things we saw in Greenville was a great example of an airport and its adjacent land, most importantly, being used as a critical economic development tool for the Greenville-Spartanburg Airport. It's not just an airport to fly in and out of. And as a lifelong resident and commercial real estate expert here in town, I can tell you, we have clients, we have investors, we have potential retailers and manufacturers that fly to this market all the time. I, for one, am tired of our airport being a punchline. You know, unfortunately, that's the reality that we live in. But I think I highly encourage a long-term economic study of our airport, especially the adjacent lands. We have a tremendous need for industrial zone dirt in this town. We have a tremendous need for turnkey-ready dirt to where we can react to an opportunity if and when it comes, and we can react quickly. I can't speak enough of how many calls we turn down on a daily basis because either we don't have the land or we don't have the product to put these people. So, with that, again, I highly encourage this long-term study. I think it is money well spent, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And again, congratulations on your national award.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sue Dick, and then Alan Hansteen, and I believe that's the last speaker we have at this part of the meeting.
Ms. Dick, good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. And thank you to those of you that participated in our trip to Greenville. I know the feedback we continue to receive from the business sector and the business community was they appreciated the opportunity to spend time with all of you and to learn. We're here today, the Chamber of Commerce took a position about a year and a half ago, under the leadership of Heidi Otway, with regards to asking for a study to look at structure. Our ask is that you advance that today and appreciate all of your consideration. I would also like to bring in a couple of different perspectives to this. I've had the opportunity to serve on the Airport Advisory Board for 19 years. I want to pause and recognize the excellent staff that is at the airport. Our interim director and the entire team, I have seen over years, work very, very hard to advance the efforts of that airport. I also want to emphasize that I don't think, while the governance structure is something that can be looked at and determined, I know right now that there are different models, as referenced by Jeff Hendry, where that you would still have the input. That is something that you all could determine. So, I think it still stays attached to the city as an asset, but I think it really points as to what we're trying to do. We're trying to create jobs. We have the opportunity to work every day with your Office of Economic Vitality. What Christina Paredes is doing in their efforts to work on industry, to advance the opportunities to create jobs, is something that we're committed to and we want to keep doing. I know the magnetics task force is working very hard, actually, knowing that hopefully, in the next several months, they will continue to work hard and bring, maybe, potential individuals to look at our community. So, we are working hand-in-hand with Office of Economic Vitality. And as a Chamber, we'll do everything we can to support them. So, our commitment stays the same. We know that this airport is a regional asset, not only just for our area, but our neighboring counties. And as we look to the future, we hope that you'll give great consideration to not only advancing the study, but what this could look like for our community and our region. Thank you very, very much for your time and your leadership.
Thank you. Mr. Hansteen, how are you, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alan Hansteen, 3186 Dunbar Lane. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, staff, appreciate it. I am a appointee of the Airport Advisory Committee. I am here today as a member of that committee, but not on behalf of that committee. I am also a resident here, and as anybody who follows me on Facebook knows, I fly in and out of the airport quite a bit, both on the commercial side and the general aviation side. And I'm here today just to ask for all of your support for our staff. I know Sue mentioned it just a minute ago. I wanted to make sure we didn't get past it. I've been a recent appointee of the committee, but it's been amazing in my time, in just a few months, to see what interim director Pollard and associate interim director Derwin have done and continue to do, and the entire staff who are represented here. So, I want to make sure that they get the support that they need. I would ask that we remove those interims at your earliest convenience. That's a personal position. And just want to make sure that everybody knows the value of the airport. I've been able to see the impact it's made in Hurricane Michael relief earlier this year, military training and operations more recently, and it is an asset. I'll let you all decide on everything else. But I didn't want to get past this day without making sure that we recognize the incredible staff that we have out there. Thank you.
Alan, thank you very much. Do we have any other speakers? Mr. Cook?
I have no other speakers.
Is there anybody here that has not had a chance to fill out a form but would still like to speak on the issue? Langston, sure. If you wouldn't mind just filling one out after the fact, your name and address in three minutes, please, sir.
My name is Mac Langston, 8845 Glen Abbey Drive. I apologize for not filling out a speaker's slip before I got up here. One, it's exciting to hear everyone talk about One, it's exciting to hear everyone talk about the value of the asset we have at the airport. It's something that we've looked at and known for quite some time. As corny as it is, there was a saying by one of the generals of World War II that if you're going to measure the heartbeat of the city, take the pulse of the airport. And I think that's true right now. It plays a very vital role in the community. Unlike most in here, we live at the airport. We have invested at the airport over many, many years. We've got a tremendous amount of time. We've been in business for 38 years now, with all of that focused on bringing business, bringing opportunity to Tallahassee. We hire people from Lively Vocational School, from the AMP School. We service aircraft from all over the country, literally all over the world. We sell aircraft from here all over the world. There's not a lot in the infrastructure that the airport has that we need. We have, gentlemen commented about the runways. We are very fortunate in what we've been able to put down to facilitate use of the airport. And I got 90% of the work is just having it ready to go when you get that 10% opportunity to chase it. And I think we're in a better position right now than we have been in some time to attract businesses. And I would encourage this group to work together cooperatively and try to figure out what's best for the airport and for the community, and look at the airport both as it exists under the city structure, what it does, it doesn't do well, and look at it, what would happen, how the authority, an authority structure would help that or hinder it. And our concern right now for us is that we've had instability, and we've had instability out there for quite some time in the leadership. And when I say over time, some of you may not be aware, we, again, 38 years out there, we've seen from Hopkins to Bob Johnson to, and then you can go through about 20 different airport directors and staff out there. So our experience has been that we've had that change. That's hurt us in many ways, the inability to have a solid vision. I hope this yields that and generates that kind of focus for the community. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Langston. Appreciate it. Any other speakers?
No, sir.
Anyone else here that wishes to speak? Okay, before we get into the presentation and commission discussion, I am going to take a second and ask every member of the Tallahassee International Airport that is present to please stand and be recognized because we were just awarded the number-one municipal airport in the nation. We are very proud of you. Mr. Pollard, I'm not going to ask you to stand because you'll get all red on me in the face and everything, but I want to recognize you as interim director for winning the number-one director of a municipal airport in the nation in the same year we took both awards home. Congratulations. So with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's well-deserved recognition. Certainly, we are very proud of the good work that David and his team do every day keeping our airport looking good and really a beacon for our community. And I think it's an important topic. That's why we hear so much about this. You heard in some of the speakers that this topic's been out there for a couple of years, maybe not quite a couple of years, but it's been some discussion. And today, we want to present you a single-topic workshop, right? So we have plenty of time to sit and talk and roll up our sleeves and evaluate the airport. In fact, we've got a very thorough presentation that's going to be led by our interim director, David Pollard. He's joined by consultant Phil Jeffco with Michael Baker International. Phil is a true expert. I think you've met him before, and so I think we've got the right folks at the table to lead us through this. At the conclusion of the presentation, we've made a recommendation that you authorize a feasibility study. That feasibility study, we believe, could take about nine months. This is an in-depth analysis of what we would anticipate. We believe that timing to be in line with any kind of legislative action that might be necessary if you chose to move to an authority. So that would be our recommendation. But first, again, we've got a thorough presentation. We'd like to walk through it. I'd like David to take the lead and go ahead and begin.
Thank you, city manager, and thank you to you all for your leadership, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, appointed officials. It's my honor and privilege to be before you today, and I, too, would like to recognize the hard work and efforts of our staff. Each and every day, we're out there behind the scenes ensuring a safe, secure, efficient, and customer-friendly airport. It's an airport for all, all members of the community and region. Our catchmen area that we serve, it's so important that they understand how hard our staff is working out there each and every day. I encourage our staff and our senior leadership in all that we do to be strategic, be visionary, and be bold. And the be bold part is to look at new ways, not do things the way we always have, but let's look at new ways to move the needle and move forward. With that, I would like to walk you through the presentation we've got here today. I hit on on the start of the first slide here. We are vital for business and economic development. It's important that we all recognize the regional asset that we are. Our efforts do not stop at our fence line of the airport. It's very, very important to understand that. Our efforts are out there. Our planning is out 100 miles. Yes, we think about Port St. Joe. Yes, we think about Appalachian Regional Planning Council's efforts to develop a freight transportation zone in the I-10 corridor, in our proximity to that I-10 corridor. So we're thinking about these things much further out from the airport. Some of the key industries here listed, what the chamber has identified, I've taken those right off of their website, but key there is the trade and transportation and logistics. I wanted to chart so you could see all employers, and this is coming straight off of OEV's website, all employers, what you see here is the logos of all employers that have 200 employees or greater. And so we wanted to let you take a quick look at that. Two in particular, Danfoss and GT Technologies, we've got to have two anchors to our foreign trade zone. We've received letters of support from those two businesses to anchor our foreign trade zone, meaning they do have intentions of doing business internationally. They're doing business internationally, and we certainly appreciate their support. Targeted industries, again, I want to just take you right down to the manufacturing and transportation logistics section. That's where we come into play with companies such as FedEx, looking at other cargo carriers and looking at our cargo ramp areas and things of that nature of how we can bring that to this community. We want to play a part. I've recently started field trips with our senior management staff. I've asked us to get out into the community that we serve and the region and start looking at key areas. We've gone to Innovation Park. I've spoken to the board there. I've spoken to MagLab. I've spoken to Danfoss. We're getting out to the State Emergency Operations Center. We're getting out in our community and becoming a part of it so that we can better understand the needs of those business owners and the businesses that we serve. We've heard comments here today about the importance of air travel and the importance of this airport to this region. Higher education and workforce development, again, we sit on a goldmine here with our universities and colleges that are around us. We've got lively technical center here in our backyard.
College.
College. Yes, sir.
Thank you, David.
Thank you. But we're working with them. We recently renewed their lease on the airport. They do a wonderful job training airframe and power plant mechanics right in our backyard. And I'll talk about major repair and overhaul facilities, but they can serve as a feeder to these businesses.
Let me stop you real quick, David. Because of the fact that we have not recruited those industries here yet, we are graduating these talented, well-trained individuals, and where are they going?
They're going elsewhere, Mr. Mayor. They're going to other airports to work, so we have limited jobs here. They're going to go to other airports and work AMP mechanics, avionics, things of that nature. So the more we grow here, the more we can keep that talent here locally.
Thank you.
And David, if I could add to that, Mr. Mayor, because they are also trained in subspecialties, airplanes have electrical systems, they have air conditioning systems, and so many of them will end up taking jobs in those career areas as well. Engine maintenance and repair, so they all don't go to airports, but they can go into one of those subspecialty areas.
Certainly. They all branch out into their various specialties.
Right.
Absolutely.
Good point.
Just a quick overview of the airport and some of our activities out there. I'm pleased to announce, if you have not caught it yet, the Florida Department of Transportation has released the latest results, March 2019, that reflect the economic impact of this airport. They did a statewide study. They looked at all airports in Florida. You can find that by going to their website. But our previous, they do it every five years. Our previous economic impact was 399 million. You'll see that's risen up over 50% to the 599 million. So we're on the growth, on the move. We're on the growth. We're stimulating activity. We're creating jobs. Our passenger traffic is up. All indicators are up in terms of growth, and we're doing a great job. But again, more needs to be done. Quick snapshot of our current non-stop destinations. American Airlines, Delta Airlines, and Silver Airways provide service to our airport. Total of seven cities, you can see there. The next slide shows you visually where we're going direct from Tallahassee. You'll see they're all basically major hubs, and you can get to any destination from those hubs. In terms of market share, Delta closing out calendar year 2018 is our market leader, as you see there with over 49% of the traffic. What we're seeing in terms of passenger traffic and activity levels, American Airlines with their numerous destinations, so Delta only goes to Atlanta, American Airlines is going to Charlotte, Dallas, Miami, and DC. And so from that standpoint, they're capturing more of the market share here. In terms of seats, next year, I expect that market leader to shift to American. So we're right on the cusp of shifting to a new market leader, which would be American Airlines in this community. Again, we reached a 10-year high in terms of passenger traffic activity levels. I'm very proud of that and the work of our staff. We're working very hard to break down the barriers, break down the walls, become more business-friendly to our airlines, our air carriers, our tenants, our stakeholders, all those people that do business out of the airport or have a vested interest in the airport. The comments we heard previously in terms of fuels and competition and all, it perfectly aligns with our efforts and our focus as we move ahead. Today happens to be the last day for comment. We're working on a rewrite to our airport minimum standards documents. That's the document that it takes, we set the requirements of what it takes to do business at the airport in terms of stimulating competition, breaking down the walls and the barriers and the unnecessary rules and regulations that we've had over a period of time. We're trying to take all that out and become as streamlined and business-friendly as we can so that we listen to the people that are talking to us. We're getting out in the community. We're hearing more from those business leaders and stakeholders, and we're doing something about it. In terms of load factors, they're on the right-hand column, and so I'll just explain them real quick. ATL is Atlanta. CLT is Charlotte. DCA is Washington, DC, Dallas-Fort Worth, Miami, Fort Lauderdale, Orlando, and Tampa. Those are the different, seven different routes that we serve minus Orlando. That's reflecting the activity that we had when Silver was flying to Orlando, and they no longer provide that service. But you can see there from the chart and graph, Fort Lauderdale and the Miami area in particular, if you combine those two markets between American and Silver, our highest demand market is the Fort Lauderdale-Miami area. The most people are typically flying through Atlanta, but in terms of where they want to get to is down to South Florida. In terms of air freight and the air freight trends, you'll see the spike there in 2018. I'm proud to, and I was even impressed as I put this together, to look at the numbers and see 14.3% increase from the previous year. So our cargo is on the rise. And again, that's part of our efforts and working collaboratively, in this case with FedEx, and certainly having our eye towards future carriers that can help us with cargo and freight out of this airport, if it's a future UPS or DHL-type activity or carrier. We have a strong cargo freight market in this area, and I'd like to continue to move forward and capitalize on that and the asset that it is for us. You may not know, but when we reworked our air carrier or air cargo ramp a while back, we actually designed it to accommodate future capacity. So FedEx is not using the entire ramp, but also in our master plan, we reflected additional sort and distribution-type facilities and an expansion of the ramp so that we could accommodate that growth. In terms of fixed base operator, you heard from one of the speakers, Millionaire is the current provider of fuel sales. There's a lot of rules that come along with that. In terms of fuel flowage, the total fuel flowage increased over 25% in 2018. That falls in line with what we're seeing in terms of aircraft operations. I like to look at things separately in terms of commercial aircraft and their operations, general aviation and military, and I like to look at those separately and see how we're doing on all fronts. But in this case, you see that the fuel flowage that's going through the airport is up over 25% in 2018. I love this slide right here. And just it reflects a broad array of the activity that's going on at the airport on any given day. We've got military aircraft operations. We've got helicopter operations. The diversions, a while back, I forwarded a picture of, and this just happened yesterday, by the way, we got two Delta diversions in bad weather up in Atlanta, planes flying up from Tampa and Miami that are trying to get to Atlanta, but because of the bad weather, they got to put it down somewhere. And where we lie geographically, we do see and get a lot of diversions and all. That helps with fuel sales. That helps with activity. We're putting our best foot forward to keep them taken care of while they're here. They may simply just need a charge on their phone. They may need a slice of pizza. They may need a bottle of water. If it's that simple to take care of the customers that come through this community, we're going to do it. In terms, now, we might build the airline for those pizzas, but...
David, can I interrupt you for a second? You know, Commissioners, I don't pass these along all the time, but I get more emails than you can imagine from people that aren't from here and had no destination here, but that get diverted to Tallahassee. They come to our airport, and they send emails of how hospitable we've been, and it's really David and his leadership and really taking good care of them and being a good host. And that's part of being a good ambassador for your community. So I just want to take the opportunity to say that. I don't send those along every time, but you couldn't imagine how many of those we get because it happens on a regular basis. Good job, David.
Thank you, sir. In terms of aircraft operations, again, like I said, I like to break them down separately. This is a very impressive graph. As you look at the activity here and the growth, 11% increase in general aviation airline operations. You do see the dip in the military traffic. We just went through and completed a, and you'll see it here in a minute, an over $8 million project on rehabilitation, reconstruction of our south ramp. We redid all the helicopter parking areas, that previous picture where you saw that helicopter activity from the military. That's what contributes to the dip you see here with the military traffic. But in the last month or two, that military traffic has come back at over 50% growth from the previous calendar year. So military traffic is now again on the rise. In terms of terminal improvements, again, just some quick visuals in terms of what's happening in the terminal. This is important to the carrier. Sometimes they don't like to admit it because they want to squeeze us on costs, but we have to put our best foot forward as a community and say, we're going to have a modern and efficient terminal facility. We're going to think about things like CAT 6 cabling and the way that we can bring in a carrier and let them plug and play. Plug in your computer, set up your gate displays, and go. You fly the plane, we'll do everything else. And so we're working on that, and it's working. We're getting a lot of positive feedback in terms of our terminal facility and making it more convenient for the customer and the users of the facility. This is just some quick airport awards and recognition. You mentioned one earlier, but I'm pleased to report we did receive the 2018-19 Air Commercial Service Airport of the Year Award from Florida Department of Transportation. We also received an honorable mention from Airports Council International in terms of our Airport Ambassador Program. We've received a certificate of appreciation from Honor Flight Tallahassee and 2019 Most Creative Campaign from the United Way, our golf tournament that our staff does a wonderful job of putting on, raised a lot of money for United Way this year, so. In terms of available parcels, so there are several aspects. We're working on air service development. We're working on competitive airfares. We're working to stimulate competition. We're working on breaking down those rules, regulations, and requirements that it takes to do business on the airport. But in terms of available parcels, and so that we marry up with what's in our airport master plan that we presented to you on March 6th, there's these parcels, and I'm going to go to the next slide here so you can see it a little bit better. These parcels represent the available parcels for development. A lot of times, people drive by the airport, they see all the open land, and they think that it can all be developed. That's not entirely true. We have a lot of airspace that we have to protect. We have building restriction lines. We have runway safety areas, runway object-free areas, all these imaginary surface areas that we have to protect out there. And we're doing that each and every day, and the development plans and proposed development needs to fall in line with those plans so that we can ensure on a foggy day when an aircraft's coming into land and they might need to do a missed approach, that we've protected that airspace around. And we're thinking about things, the height of the structures, the obstruction lighting on top of those facilities and things of that nature. Some of the catalysts for airport economic development, these are just a few. I won't read them to you, but we've got a lot in motion. You've heard from us on the international facility. Customs and Border Protection recently, on March 21st, approved our user fee status. That's a conditional approval, meaning we have to start construction on that facility within the next three years. So we're currently moving through the design and scoping of that facility, and we'll be moving forward. That will become the home to the customs agents here in Tallahassee, and from there, we'll be submitting our formal application for the foreign trade zone. And that's, again, working with OEV, our partners at the Chambers and Commerce, things of that nature. We're working on that to bring whole picture and make us as competitive as we can be. We've been at a competitive disadvantage, and we look at those airports around us, and many people don't always understand why the international. It's a long-term effort. It's a long-term effort to make us more competitive, and as we move forward, one of the speakers mentioned some of the things around us, okay, and the spawn-off businesses. You know, we've got Embraer Manufacturing or Assemblyman Aircraft in Melbourne. You know, we've got Embraer Manufacturing or Assemblyman Aircraft in Melbourne, we've got Gulfstream in Savannah, we've got Airbus in Mobile, we've got all these things around us. I believe that we can be a part of that.
Yes, sir.
We've just got to put our best foot forward and develop some of that.
David, before we move to that slide, the foreign trade zone is not limited to the property in and around the airport, though. Just give us a feel for the breadth or the scope of the foreign trade zone.
Sure. So what I did a while back is I got with Customs and Border Protection, I had them giving me the map of all the foreign trade zones in Florida, and you saw a big hole. You saw all the ones around us, but in this part of Florida, you didn't see anything. And so we become the center of the future foreign trade zone, and we intersect with the Panama City and the Jacksonville, and again, the freight transportation zone and some of those other things that provide effective movement from the ports. And now we can, you can seamlessly move from the ship along the I-10 corridor and into our airport, assemble your widget or gadget, whatever it may be, and then move it back out, you know? So that's 60 minutes and 90 miles is the criteria for the foreign trade zones and how they intersect. Some of the current projects we have in motion, this is the South Apron rehabilitation that I spoke of, complete resurfacing of that, and also new helicopter parking pads. We designed those helicopter parking pads to the Blackhawk helicopter, which you saw in some of the previous picture. Those fill up regularly. We've provided for an allocation of additional helicopter parking within our master plan process, and we do intend to build more. But from this standpoint, you see the Blackhawks there in the picture, you see two in the air, and you can, if you look closely, you can see some other helicopters that are able to utilize those, so. So we're looking at all aspects of aviation. That's very important. Whenever I speak, I don't like it always to be focused on commercial aviation. General aviation and the business aviation, the military traffic is very important to us, having a holistic airport, a competitive airport, and an airport we can all be proud of. Airport Security Systems is another project behind the scenes. We've put in a whole new network backbone to our airport security system, fiber optic, CAT 6 cabling, new cameras, new switches, all happening in the background. We've also acquired some portable X-ray equipment when we get those unattended bags that somebody might leave behind. We need to approach those cautiously. We're looking to minimize the disruptions, the operational disruptions that could become a full terminal evacuation. These are the tools that we use to be able to go back, look at, and identify who left that bag there, and is there any ill intentions, or did they just simply leave the bag and run into the restroom real quick? It happens every day, but we're able to look at that, make smart decisions, work with our friends at TSA and avoid the full terminal evacuation because we can paint the picture through our camera surveillance and through other things that happen along the way. Some of our upcoming projects, passenger loading bridge improvements, we're working in the final stages of a RFP-type document that we will be moving forward with, new flight information display system improvements and the web interface of that system so that you can go out onto our website and look at flight information. We're working on air traffic control tower improvements. That facility was built, we own the control tower, if you're not aware. We own the control tower and lease it back to the FAA, and that facility was built in, basically finished up in about '94, I believe it was. So that facility's showing its age. We've got some roof leaks, we've got some water intrusion. We're trying to fix that facility up and get it in tip-top shape for our friends at the FAA. We're working on improvements to our, Tallahassee Fire Department provides our aircraft rescue and firefighting services. They do a wonderful job for us. This is just a modernization of that facility, we'll be working with them on. Also, working on a design of a new rental car facilities, I think we spoke about previously. Those original facilities across the street were part of the original airport in the early '60s, so they've asked us to accelerate that project, and we're moving forward with the design of that. Runway 1836, that's our north-south runway. We're starting, going to be starting to design very shortly to improve, make improvements to that runway and rebuild that along with the parallel taxiway and the adjacent taxiway connectors, and also start and design of that international facility. And with that, I'll hand it off to Phil and let him talk to you about airport governance.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So a little over a year ago, I had the opportunity to speak before the commission here, and now we have some new bright faces in the crowd, and sorry if I repeat some of my...
One mature face.
That's right.
Here.
It's a habit. But we want to take the time we have to give you a little bit of background about the different forms of governance that are out there, that I see every day in the industry. I work all over the world in the aviation industry, it's what I do, and wanted to give you a little bit of feedback. There's definitely positives and negatives associated with every form of governance. Here today, we want to give you some ammunition, some facts, and give you something to think about. Things I'll say today aren't necessarily black and white, hard and fast, some things are potential benefits and potential disadvantages, but I'll try to bring that up as I go through If we look at governance, at our current governance here, it's a city-owned airport facility, it's done well over the years, and it is governed by you folks. And in addition to that, we have interim director of aviation that is responsible for the day-to-day operation of the airport. As we've heard already, they do a great job here, and we wanted to continue to do so. We're looking at operating an airport that has, when you start looking at the support facilities and infrastructure, whether it's the police protection, law enforcement, fire protection, you know, that gives us about 72 employees that we have here at the airport, and they're working around the clock to make sure that the place is safe and efficient for the general flying public. Everything that is earned on the airport stays on the airport. I don't know, a lot of folks that we run into in the community, they think, well, my tax dollars are paying for this and that, and it's not exactly quite that way. The folks that pay to operate the airport, if you fly, your taxes and your airfare goes towards funds from the FAA and DOT to further fund some of the projects. You hear the grant funding that we get from those agencies, that's great. If you buy fuel at the airport, the taxes that are on that fuel go to help fund some of the things at the airport. So it isn't necessarily our taxes, our sales taxes that we see here in the community that are paying for the airport necessarily. If we look at the different governance models that we have available, we have airports around the world and even here in the state of Florida that are city-owned and run, county, even states-owned and run some of the airports. In addition to that, we have airport authorities, and we'll talk a little bit about that today, both in the form of that, in the independent form and the dependent form. Also, there are other offshoots of that that are port authorities that operate more than just airports, seaports and rail installations and so on, and they're all combined as one. Good examples of that might be Port Authority of New York or something like that, that you see in other large municipalities. And then we also have privately-run airports. If you look at this next slide here, it kind of gives you an idea of the percentages of ownership that we see out there in the industry. And the big component of that is really focused on city and airport authority-run airports. That seems to be the lion's share of this. That's pretty much by design. They're the most common out there, and you see that there's a lot of flexibility in both forms of governance. There are similarities, as you'll find out here in a moment, between the two, but there are also, depending on the community and the reasons that you would want to consider a different form of governance, that may apply to y'all. We want to look at the potential impacts to the operation, to the business community. We heard some members of the community come to speak today, those are some of their concerns. And a study that you're pondering would be able to look at that a little further in depth and give you some of the facts that you need to make decisions. So in our municipal form of governance for airport, which Tallahassee runs under, I'd like to put this in two ways, I like to call this potential advantages and potential disadvantages because these slides, when we developed these over a year ago to communicate this to folks, it's looking at the whole cross-section, you know, across the country, you know, what we tend to see in these forms of governance. But if I start looking at some of the advantages, we definitely have, we heard this before with one of the speakers, accountability to the local, to the citizens, and you have government officials that are elected to look after what the citizenry is looking to accomplish. In addition to that, we are also looking to have the access to city resources that are out there helping run the airport day-to-day. There's definitely an economy of scale associated with your procurement processes here at the city level, and so those are all good benefits. There are financial benefits that go along with supporting the facility and operating it day-to-day. And in some communities, potential disadvantages are that you have constituents, and you have a lot on your plate as commissioners for the city of Tallahassee, and the airport isn't your only thing that you'd be focusing on. So when you're comparing against other forms of governance, there's a potential that you've got a lot of different things to juggle in the day-to-day operation of the airport and your duties. In addition to that, you're also looking at services that the airport pays, correct me if I'm wrong here, David, but you pay back to the city for some of those services. And in some cases, those services aren't necessarily used as widely as you would if you had to go get those on your own. So you're paying a certain amount like that to support that. The other thing here is that you're not, in some cases, we see the city run airports compared to the authorities, not as, able to act as quick as others. And so that's another consideration. We're looking at speed, making decisions, and supporting business activities, more business-friendly environment. We're not saying that this is an unfriendly environment for business, but the authorities tend to be a little bit more business-centric, business-focused. If we move on to the next slide here and look at the airport authority form of governance, we're also looking at, as we'd heard from some speakers, a board that maybe is formed to represent a broad array of areas within the community, not just the city of Tallahassee in this case. We'd be looking at other areas. It might coincide with your area of the catchment area, excuse me, thank you, and that would allow representation accordingly. You have that, like I said before, the ability to be more agile and to respond perhaps a little more quickly for some types of situations affecting the airport, and you have that separation from the government where you, actually, the focus of that body would be specifically the airport, and that's probably the key difference here. As far as disadvantages, you know, you see them listed here, but the thing is that some of these disadvantages don't necessarily apply here, and one of the things that a study like, a feasibility study that we're talking about, it would be able to specifically drill down into this area and specifically point out what some of those efficiencies and deficiencies are. But this gives you an idea of the types of things that other airports do face, and when you don't have that, those services that are readily available here at the city level, you would have to go out elsewhere to get those services still to operate as an airport Now, one of the, in an effort to create the authority here or a special district in the state of Florida, it would have to have a state, it'd have to be created by the state at the government level. And when we talked a little bit, I think Reese was talking at the beginning in his introductory comments, you know, the key, if you were to move forward with a study like this, would be to, you know, complete it in a reasonable amount of time and make sure that it was completed in an effort before the next session so that you could take advantage of that if you decided to move forward with it. The point here on the next slide I'd like to make is, in the authority where we have dependent and independent, what we are actually talking about here, if we're looking to study this further, is to study an independent authority. There are, if you were to compare it, a dependent authority where it would be operated by a city or county government and then have this authority report through them, there's very little difference between what your current form of governance and that dependent form of authority governance. So we are actually looking at the independent authority. It's probably the most common that we see out there in authorities around the country, and it gives them that flexibility to be focused on the duties and the business of the airport as a whole. The key here is also, as an independent authority, they would have control over the resources, and the members of that body would be appointed, and we heard that a little bit earlier too, be appointed both from the local level as well as the governor. That's what we see most common. Here's just an example of, there are 24 authorities here throughout the state of Florida. You'll see, there's just a cross-section, we don't have them all here on this slide, but they give you a cross-section of independent and dependent, and it's a case-by-case basis. As you'll see, for some of these that are dependent, they're tied specifically to a county or city government, and some of these are very well-known to you here, I'm sure. But as we look at the independent authorities out there, especially in these commercial service airports, it is very common to see that independent authority structure. I mentioned this before, last time I came before the board on this subject, and we have a lot of variability in the ability to make up that board, to make up that authority board of directors. You see a lot of flexibility to get a good representation, a good cross-section of the community at large, not just necessarily the city itself. And that's good when you look at the area that David was talking about, the caption area, how far you go out to actually serve the flying public. And additionally, you're looking at that as either appointed by the governor or by the local, and it's usually a cross-section of both. And we typically see between about seven to 11, seven to 12 members in each of those boards, is typical size that you would run across. And the other part of this is that we're looking at staggered terms typically, probably very similar to what you have here, so that you have that continuity over time.
Okay, so with that, I would like to just summarize some things I believe should be considered, and I'd like to just run through those real quick for you. Some of the items, I believe, will help us remain competitive as an economic engine for the region and to ensure the long-term success of our airport. There's a nationwide trend right now in terms of aging infrastructure, and that's certainly hitting us right now. We've got runways and taxiway pavements, the pavements on our perimeter road, infrastructure, our terminal facility is coming up on 30 years old, we're having air handlers and elevators and things of that nature that are giving us a little more issues right now. We've got the pipes in the ground, the water leaks and busted water mains and things of that nature. We've got Mother Nature herself that rains down on us, and a while back, a bolt of lightning crossed the airport over the top and hit one of the light poles and went down... crossed the airport over the top and hit one of the light poles and went down and busted a water main, shut down water service to the whole terminal facility back then. So we're dealing with those things. Our goal is always to prevent the operational disruption of air service into this community. And we take that very seriously. So with that, the aging airport infrastructure, air service development and competitive airfares, we're working on that. We continue to talk to our current carriers and we're talking to other carriers. It's a work in progress. We always have to create the business case. And without the business community, we won't have the business case. So we're working to identify how we can make things better and more competitive, break down those rules, as I mentioned with the minimum standards documents, and make things much more competitive within our market, which will help drive fares down, stimulate the growth and development that leads to additional revenues, both aeronautical and non-aeronautical revenues for us. I believe we stand well-postured to bring in a maintenance, repair, and overhaul-type facility. You see Pensacola doing that now. They're, it's not their, you don't see their airport director in the middle of it. It's becoming a broader community focus and community effort as they receive dollars from Triumph and the city and the county. And they're all working collaboratively to bring in this major repair and overhaul facility over there with huge dollars. Also preparing the necessary infrastructure. A wise man up at Greenville, at the closing session, talked about ready, set, go. Ready, set, go. And that's positioning ourselves to have the land, think about the stormwater, think about all these things out in advance so that we are ready, set, go with our development opportunities that we have out there at the airport. Those bring in additional revenue streams to us and helps us offset our operating I believe we could identify a master developer that would help us advance and accelerate airport development. I believe we have, as I mentioned, developed new innovative aeronautical and non-aeronautical revenue streams. Our current revenue streams and sources are not keeping pace with our needs in terms of that aging infrastructure that I talked about. And we'll certainly be bringing some other items to you in the future as we look at those runways and the pavements and the terminal and all these other areas. But we need to be thinking about those new and innovative revenue streams as we move forward. I believe we should review the current bylaws and makeup of the Citizens Advisory Committee. We currently have two vacancies. We've got two that will be rolling off in July and two that are up for reappointment. So that's six right there. I think we're at a good place right now to take a fresh look at where we want to be and where we want to go. And let's write our next chapter and look at those bylaws. We've also, as I mentioned, with respect to some of those capital projects, capital project funding needs and identification of new local and regional funding mechanisms required to match those federal and state grant opportunities. If we receive a state grant, for example, we're required to match 50% of that. So if I get a $5 million grant, I need to put up $2.5 million, or if I get $5 million, I need to put up $5 million from the state. If I get a federal grant, 90% federal, 5% state, 5% local government. I'm trying to leverage those investments and make as much progress as we can using other people's money, but leveraging and getting that return on investment for our community that we can. I would much rather make these investments in taxiways and pavements and runways at a nickel on the dollar or 50 cents on the dollar than paying the whole dollar. So we're looking at the proper leveraging of our funds in the background every day. But we do need some help with identifying some mechanisms to match those opportunities. Talent and training support, again, continuing to work within the community. You know, a while back, I had an MRO facility that was interested in coming here. And I took them over to Lively and I introduced them to the players over there. And I was trying to make those connections. We brought OEV in on the conversation. And we were looking at that. In that case, we lost them to another airport that was, already had the facilities that were built. They were there and ready to be moved into and they could start operations tomorrow. So we got beat out on that one. But we are seeing a lot more interest in our airport. Just this morning, I got an inquiry, you know. So we're looking at new opportunities every day and trying to be much more responsive as we get these interests that are coming into us and being more responsive to them. And lastly, I'll mention is succession planning. I think it's very important that we look at succession planning out at the airport in terms of, you know, we've got a lot of people that have been there for a lot of time. I believe over the next five years, over 25% of our workforce will be eligible for retirement. And so I certainly want to take a look at the organization, working with our city leadership and the support that we've got from them. We're making organizational tweaks. We're adding depth to what we do. And they've been very supportive with our efforts so far. And so we're looking to make the change where we need to make the change, put the focus on the areas that need focus. And we've been making some wonderful progress in that area. And with that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions you may have, commissioners.
David, thank you very much. Phil, thank you very much. That was a wonderful presentation. Before I open it up to the commissioners, I got three quick questions myself. The recommendation it states, for the purpose, maybe this is for the city manager, an airport governance feasibility study. I am assuming, and correct me if we need to add any language in, it's not just governance, but it's also the economic impact, economic development, all the assets out there at the airport?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Okay. Are we all clear and on the same page? Excellent. Number two, this does have a budget request of $150,000 approximately. Let me be very clear. This is not coming out of the city's general revenue fund. This is coming out of the airport enterprise fund correctly, based on your budget, and it has no impact on the city. It was mentioned during testimony earlier about spending, you know, money out of the general revenue. This is coming out of the airport's budget, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And finally, this is your personal recommendation as well. We are doing extremely well. The airport's on its way up. You have won national awards and recognition. Is this the next step that we need to take in your professional opinion in order to take our community to the next level?
This absolutely is the next step. It's a step that we need to go through and make ourselves better, look ahead, and write our next chapter, who we want to be with respect to aviation in this community and the impact, the regional impact that it has for us.
Thank you. I look forward to strongly supporting the motion to move forward when one is made. I'll just go straight down the line, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A number of issues. The first was the issue of instability, particularly in the leadership at the airport, David. And there has been lots of changes over the years, some as frequent as a month. I think we had a director out there for about a month at one point. How much of that is related to what we're able to compensate our airport director compared to some of the other airports?
Yes, sir. It certainly has an impact. You know, there's lots of jobs that are out there that various directors have looked at in the past. Other airports do have better competition and more competitive salaries. Airports are always doing various surveys to look at where each other stand. And it is a very important part of the equation.
So would you think that that would be something that we might need to look at if we were going to keep our current structure?
Commissioner, let me answer that. I think it's probably most appropriate for me to answer that question. And as you know, we've advertised the airport director position, and I'm very pleased that David's one of the candidates. We have about 40 candidates. In the salary of the airport director will not be an issue. Whatever we need to do to make sure that we have and retain the most qualified airport director, I am committed to that. I have the authority to do that clearly. I would work with you guys to make sure we incorporate it properly in the budget. But that will not be a barrier to recruiting or retaining an airport director.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I, you know, I think what we're going through now lends itself to the instability. Because here we are now, over the next nine months, we're not going to know what, in the future, our airport is going to, its governance structure. That, to me, lends itself to some of that same instability and maybe even more so than the leadership. So that's, again, something that we need to take into consideration. I think in terms of, we should have a vision, and I know Commissioner Bryant will agree with me on this, that we should have a vision, a mission statement, our values and objectives. And I think any leader coming in, if they don't buy into that vision and mission, maybe that's not who we want in that leadership role. I think that would address some of the instability that's created when we change airport directors. So the ridership and fares have been brought up, and I give you an interesting anecdote. Just recently, I was making, and I know this isn't typical, but it happens. I was just making flight reservations for my family and I, and I compared the rates out of Jacksonville, which is typically one of our competitors, and Tallahassee. The fares out of Tallahassee were $400 less than what we were offered out of Jacksonville. Same flight, same destination, just different point of departure. But we, out of Tallahassee, the fare, same number of riders, everything was the same except location, $400 less out of Tallahassee. And so I guess what it brings me to now is the role of the advisory committee. I understood in Greenville that they have a six-person commission that meets six times a year. I'm not quite sure how they can be nimble and agile and quick to make decisions when they only meet six times a year. We meet twice a month as a commission. The airport director has instant contact with the city managers. So that one, I couldn't quite
Sure.
understand, okay?
So the airport, I asked that same question up there. The airport director does have the authority to work with the board chair to call a, request a special meeting should something urgent come up that he needs their involvement in?
But I'm not sure that that says agile is knowing that we've got two meetings a month and, you know, those issues can be brought up as opposed to a called meeting where you got to work with people's schedules. And so anyway, I'm bringing up issues that we would need to address if this is something that we want to consider. I'm not, I know that, well, and I guess we would need to look at what the role of the advisory committee or governing authority would be. In Greenville, it was strictly a policymaking authority that was by their charter, was prohibited from being involved in the day-to-day operation of the airport. So it would seem to me that it was the executive director who drove much of what was, has been accomplished and what is being accomplished at the airport in Greenville. So that's something that we might want to take a look at, is the exact role of that governing body. The other issue that I would want us to consider is what has happened with the state of Florida. You know, we at one point rushed into the privatization of a lot of state functions. And what we found is that many of those functions had to be brought back into the state because our state employees did a better job. Eventually, the cost of that privatization would go up, the contract costs would go up, the quality of the services weren't as good as when we had those in-house. And so, again, I'm not saying that private is always better. And so that's another issue that we need to consider as we go forward. And then finally, I guess, is if we were to decide to go to an authority, how would that transition take place? You know, we've got millions of dollars in public assets in that airport, and we're talking about a private authority that would be separate and apart from, you know, the governing body of the city of Tallahassee and the city manager. So how does that transition take place? How does the authority assume those millions of dollars in public assets? Would they have to purchase all of that from? So again, just issues that we need to think about as we consider this whole issue. And then lastly, you know, a lot of the disadvantages that were talked about in terms of the current makeup of our board, the municipally-owned, I think those are things that David has addressed in his presentation. You know, the business-like function of the airport director. And many of the other things that were cited as disadvantages are issues that we could address in the current structure. So again, just issues that we need to consider as we move forward with this. I don't know what the problem is that we're attempting to resolve. And I'm not sure that I'm in favor of a feasibility study. Because I think that the issues that have been raised are issues that, but I do agree with you, David, that we need to take another look at the current makeup of our board. Because I know that, and I was told that two meetings prior to the vote that was taken to support the authority, there was no quorum of the board. That troubles me. Because if they are there to assist you in the operation, we need to have people who are going to be committed to that and show up for meetings. So maybe we need to look at the structure of that board, the composition of that board, and the kind of people that would be necessary to make it a more efficiently and fully functioning board. Again, issues that we need to consider as we go forward and determine if this is the direction that we want to go in, even with the feasibility study. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Would you just go down? Commissioner Malo?
I'll go next. Well, thank you for the presentation. That was fantastic. And congratulations to you and your team on all your accomplishments. Mr. Baker, I had, I've heard two main things from the audience, and that's economic development and fares and ridership. So I just wanted to figure out, if we switch to an airport authority, how much lower would fares in
Couldn't specifically answer that, but I could give a try. We tend to see lower fares across the board at airports that have that flexibility and happen to be run as an authority.
Okay.
It's not, there's not a direct correlation, but that we do tend to see that.
Is that an anecdotal correlation? Okay. We're trying to be fact-based here. This is a serious conversation, and we want to make sure we're dealing in facts and not opinions or what happened in one city. But if a governance change is beneficial for Tallahassee, we want to know and we want to do it. But I just want to make sure we're dealing in concrete facts and not speculations.
One last thing I'll mention along those lines are is that when we're looking at air service and the type of air service and the frequency, it has a lot to do with the way the airlines are dealing with the particular owner of the airport. And if they, if the airlines have a better relationship or more flexibility of dealing with an authority versus, let's say, the city, you know, that could have an impact on how they provide service to your community. So that is a fact.
Is there any data on the economic impact and economic development in cities that have an airport authority versus a municipal-run airport?
Commissioner, that FDOT study, if
Commissioner, that FDOT study, if you go to their website, it has every airport in Florida as a part of that study.
Okay. And what's the busiest airport in, I guess, America?
Atlanta.
Atlanta. What's their government structure?
Their city, they recently were exploring, coming up under a state authority, that I believe just recently was announced that they are choosing to stay with the city governance structure.
Okay. Just funny anecdote, because I grew up in Tallahassee and used to fly by myself and always flew out of Tallahassee. And then now I have, booking my first vacation with my new six-month-old baby, and I got to buy four tickets. So I'm really conscious of price more than I may have used to be when it was just me. And it's very tempting to see the low fares in Atlanta and see what I could save, you know, driving up there with, you know, it's municipal-run government, but they have the lowest fares from what I can see. But normally, as an individual, it's less of an impact. So I just find that interesting, you know, just talking what's good at one airport versus what's good at another. So I think, just from the presentation, I see where we're going with economic development. I see all the hard work you're doing and all the rewards. And I just can't come to the logical conclusion that the next step would be to dramatically overhaul our governance, it seems like. It seems like we're on the right track. And I don't see, you talk about instability. We looked up, the investment in the airport over the last decade was 93 million about. And then the four-year investment we're making now is about 170 million. So we're focused on this issue. And I really want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for continuing to ride us on it because, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. And I think that attention is really what narrow this city's focus in the work you're doing. And I just think it's exceptional. So I would ask, I wouldn't support a feasibility study today just because I'm not going to support an airport authority this year. Because I think where we're at is, we're spending $170 million, we're working on a master plan, we have a new city manager, we're going to have a new airport director, and 80% of our board is brand-new. So this is all new leadership, and how do we test what works and what's failed until we give it a shot? So I mean, I would ask, I would think, between this board, if we don't have the power to make our airport an economic engine for our community, what are we doing here? What's our job? Because I think this is our job, and I think we can do it. I've heard a lot on the campaign trail, Mr. Mayor, and I think you're a visionary for your view of the airport, talking about the rail tracks and, you know, recruiting companies and landing. And I was like, yes, I want to do that. But I also think you should have the opportunity to do that. I think you can go out, I think you could meet with those companies and land some people to bring it here. So I'm not against the airport authority, I'm just against it right now. I think, see how the master plan goes in two years. If we're thinking, you know, we've had a roadblock, you know, we're going in the wrong direction, we don't want to govern this, but just being so new, it just doesn't seem to make sense for me at this point. And then if we did go through with a feasibility study, you know, I would just like to have the details of what we're actually analyzing, because I think the economic development impact and the fares are the two things people want to know the most about. And we should be comparing those and see how it would adjust to our structure.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Thank you, Mayor. These have been all great comments and dynamic presentation. Thank you, David, and thank you to your staff. I've flown in and out of the airport, and I enjoy the family room most of all. Let me just say, keep that room there, and I'll keep flying out of Tallahassee. But nevertheless, as many of you know, I'm going back to Greenville, and I'm leaving tonight after the city commission meeting.
We're going to have you out of here on time.
If not, you'll be finishing without me. But in preparing for travel, I had the option of flying, doing a direct flight from Tallahassee to Charlotte, or going ahead flying, you know, from here to Miami to Greenville. And so we decided to go ahead, because we were going to get there late anyway, we might as well land in Greenville. But I appreciated the fact that I could fly to Charlotte, which is just a short distance to drive back into Greenville. And I was, you know, and then when we were there visiting, I was thinking, you know, maybe I should have just gone on to Charlotte and come on back. But nevertheless, I think that what's most important to the residents of Tallahassee, and some of the speakers were saying that the airport is our greatest asset, I have to disagree. Our greatest asset are the members of our community and what they need and what they want. While we're sitting here talking about the governance structure for the airport, we got people who need sidewalks, we got people who need streetlights, we got people who need food. I just bought food for someone who was hanging out where I was getting food from. We've got to stick with our priorities. And we, at our retreat, we settled on some priorities, and we really need to focus on those. Now, is the airport a priority? May not, it may not be explicitly, but it is a community asset, and we have to leverage it and use it wisely so that it can feed the other parts of our priorities. I understand the need for business travel. I also understand the need for family travel. And I was glad to hear from Commissioner Richardson that Jacksonville is now getting to be not necessarily where you want to go to fly out of. We can fly out of right here. And I think that if we keep getting our ridership up and we keep proving that what we're doing is the right thing, then that will continue to happen. And we will be able to do things right here in our own back door. What the thing, one of my takeaways from Greenville was, we're doing a lot of good things here in Tallahassee, and it includes our airport and what the staff is doing there. And I, you know, I like, I would like to do the feasibility study, but I'm telling you, listening to, watching the presentation and getting the numbers and looking at where we're trending to, to me, the feasibility study should be the next step to take us there, not changing the structure, but using the current structure and seeing how far that will take us before evaluating whether we need to change the structure. Because changing the structure is taking us into a dark place that we do not know what's going to happen. Right now, we can see we're trending in the right direction. And, you know, anybody who does analysis, data analysis, will say, if you're trending where you're trying to go, why would you change course? It just, to me, it just doesn't make sense. So I came in here with an open mind, an open book, you filled it with information that I believe is true. And so now I'm trying to determine, do we need to do a feasibility study on governance? Or do we need to do a feasibility study on what we need to continue to do to take the airport to the next level? So I'm in a quandary, because if I had to vote right now, I would say, forget the governance, let's get busy doing, making it an economic driver. Let's do the feasibility study, determine what kind of economic drivers we need to keep the airport trending in the upward direction. So that's where I am. I'm focused on the economics, not the governance structure.
Commissioner Bryant.
All right. Yes, I'm last, but not least. Let me first say, David, that the presentation was very good. And, you know, I know a little bit about the airport. So I am extremely pleased that where I used to see, what I used to see and what I see today, and you very well understand that. I am, and I appreciate the comments from my fellow commissioners, I will say that I support doing the feasibility study for three reasons. First of all, it was recommended by the city. Number two, it was supported by you. And you were the person that brought to us today the many accomplishments of the airport. We are trending in the right direction, but being able to do this feasibility study, and we probably could broaden the scope, as Commissioner Williams-Cox talked about. But we need to do the feasibility study, take everything that we have, that we know, and then put it up against where we're trying to go. Because the third factor that we have to consider is the economic engine of this city. The airport, obviously, is positioned probably to take the lead in this area. We won't know that, though, until we go ahead. I mean, I got a good feeling that that's what it is. But I think that the feasibility study positions us with concrete data to support going in one direction or the other. And it will hopefully stand on its own merit, whichever way it goes. I'm hopeful that as we complete the study, that we, as a commission, will be in the best position to not only vote on governance, not only vote on business, businesses actually coming into our community, which I'm sure everyone supports. I think we can all see that the more viable this community becomes with businesses that will bring in passengers, it really, we're not really talking about how can we get more people on the airplane until we get some businesses to bring them here. Right now, we have so many people that's going to come visit. You saw the study that was provided to us regarding visitors who come here and why they come. Before now, I probably would have thought football games brought a lot of people to Tallahassee. But I found out when I reviewed the information that that's near the bottom. So we have to, in no uncertain terms, put together some kind of economic vitality for our community that will increase the load for flights and thereby increase, obviously, and decrease prices and increase the number of people who come to our community for business reasons. So I'm going to support what my city manager, my airport director, has come to us today to say, that they would like a feasibility study. I would certainly not oppose the broaden the scope from just governance to include as much as we can get for that $150,000. So I'm all in favor of that also. And Commissioner Richardson is correct. You know, I think we do have to have a vision for our community, and I think it has to include all of the assets that we have. And we do need to write it down. And we need to remember why we're here. And then, as we look toward the future, leverage all of the assets that we have to move us forward to where we want to go. So, Mr. Mayor, that, those are my comments.
I appreciate it. Any further comment? Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Following up with what Commissioner Bryant said, Mr. City Manager, if we were to broaden the scope, because, you know, you've estimated the cost for a feasibility study for the scope that has been defined at $150,000. But if we tack on, looking at potential economic drivers, you have any idea what that, the scope, the broadening of that scope would mean? I know what happens when scope changes.
Well, Commissioner Williams-Cox, first of all, let me say, I think it's just the opposite. I think it's narrowing the scope. From what I'm understanding, y'all do not want to have a study regarding the governing structure, but you want to take a look at the economic development. So we would take governing structure off the table and just look at the assets?
Actually, that's not what Commissioner Bryant said.
That's why I'm asking for clarification.
No. We were talking about adding on. I think we do need to look at, I really don't want us to come back three years from now talking about governance, when in fact, we can do that right now.
So, let me do my best to answer that.
Okay.
And I will tell you
We're going to hold you to it, but we're just
Good. Thank you. Thank you. I always hate to put these values in these agenda items, but clearly, we're trying to give our best estimate in terms of how much a professional study would cost. Of course, we go procure the services and try to get them as low as we can. I think that we could revise the scope. I believe a professional evaluation, the mayor asked for a little clarification at the beginning, probably is $150,000 inclusive of all the scope that you guys have discussed, whether it be only a feasibility and governance. I don't think you can limit it to that. I think you have to evaluate economic impact, the impact of governance, airfares, those things. I believe $150,000 is probably the right number for a professional study of almost any kind. Again, we'd have to procure it, and I don't know, but I think that's probably a good number.
Okay. Thank you. Here we go. Mr. Mayor, for Tim.
Just a couple of other things that I wanted to mention. You know, when we were, when crime in our community rose to the level that it did, and we were identified as a community that had the highest crime rate in the state, we all were alarmed by that, of course. And that became our number-one priority. And we started to not only talk about it, but we put our money where our mouths were. And, Ms. Barbara, you were, you took the leadership role in that. But the other point there that I'm getting to is that we were laser-focused on that issue. I think if, and I agree with Commissioner Matlow in this regard, if we laser-focus on the airport, if you came to us like Chief DeLeo and did periodic updates on where we're going with the airport, that suggests to our community that we're laser-focused on that economic development asset in our community. So that's one thing. The other is, you know, we're talking about this, well, let me use this example. When we talked about the law enforcement campus, we said we wanted to get community input before we invested that $60 million. And we did that. We went out to the community, and we gave them an opportunity to talk to us and give us their input. And based on that input, we kind of reversed course. We're talking millions of dollars here that could, you know, we could be contemplating turning over to a private authority. Yet, there's not been a word about going to the community and seeing what it is they won't, what kind of input we get from the community as to the direction they want to see their airport go in. So, again, just something for us to think about. And we can say, well, you know, we can take it to the community after we get the feasibility study done, but it's my opinion that you want to get those opinions and that input upfront. Because people will think, well, the decision has already been made, you're doing the study, you know what you want to do. Why should we even give you our input at this point on the tail end? So just, again, other issues for us to consider as we decide where we're going to be on this vote this afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Matlow.
Mr. City Manager, I just had one. When will we have a permanent airport director in place?
We are nearing the process of interviews. Again, I think I said earlier, we had about 40 applicants, good applicants from around the country. I was pleased with the list. The next steps, and that'll be within the next couple of weeks, we'll impanel the interview committee, which would include a member of the, in fact, the chairman of the airport advisory board, so we can get some outside input on that. So I would say, the process will take several more weeks, and then, of course, I think we'd be at the point of making an offer.
Okay. And don't take this the wrong way, David, but I don't feel comfortable moving forward with a study until we have a permanent director, because if it's not you, maybe they have a different recommendation or they have a different idea of what they want to be studied. Until we know what the permanent leadership of the airport is, I don't really feel comfortable forcing their hand on something. And I'd also be concerned if applicants are unsure of our governance structure, if it's going to switch, would those high-quality applicants want to apply here and come to our city, knowing that they could be answering to a totally different board a year from now? The other point on that is the $150,000 is still a lot of money, and I'm dead-set on not supporting an airport authority this year, and whether it's budgeted or not. I have a lot of bank accounts, and I know if I don't spend money for one, that money's still there, and it will be available to be spent on something different. So I'm not going to support that study. What, in the presentation and the airport master plan, when will that be finalized?
Should be finalized by June, Commissioner.
Have you given any thought to economic development within that plan?
Absolutely. We set the stage for economic growth and development and future needs, aviation-related needs of this community.
Okay. Well, I'm looking forward to seeing that plan and seeing what we've already done in the space of economic development. So it just feels like this is all largely premature. We don't have all the facts we need for what we're already doing, and we don't know who's going to be in charge, and there's all so many unknowns. And really, I just don't see the rush in it. I think we're doing well. If this comes back up again in a year or two, you know, let's have the conversation if we feel like it's time to change then.
Commissioner Williams-Cox. And then Commissioner Bryant, I'm sorry. Actually, Commissioner Williams-Cox, Commissioner Bryant did have her hand up first, if you don't mind.
Don't matter.
All right. Commissioner Bryant.
Let me just follow up to something Commissioner Matlow said, because maybe the plan is to ask David to remain until we finish the study, and then we'll know what direction we're going in, rather than, and the city manager, I know that's down in, not out of sight in my lane in the policy arena. I do recognize that. But I'm just trying to address the issue that I thought I heard Commissioner Matlow say in terms of moving forward and not knowing where we are. And I do know that David has been doing an awesome job.
Commissioner Bryant, let me jump in real quick, okay? Because we're treading on some very delicate statements. I respect Commissioner Matlow's statement. I want to remind all of us that by law, local ordinance, we cannot get involved with the hiring and firing of city staff. And so, let's turn the conversation, let's keep going with the conversation as is without discussing the individuals for the position, if we could, by recommendation of the city attorney.
Well, that settles that. Let me just go back to my final statement then. I think it's critical that we actually go ahead and conduct the feasibility study, get the information, and be positioned, really, to inform the community with more information such that if we do outreach, they will be better positioned to make informed decisions. Thank you, sir.
Great. Commissioner Williams-Cox.
My concern is also stability of leadership. If I was one of those applicants and I was interviewing for the position, and there's conversation going on that something might change, something as critical as governance structure, which would mean that if going towards an authority, they would then choose their own director, what would make me want to continue to pursue this position? So I think we do have to be very careful, because we have applicants out there, we have a position being advertised, we have applicants out there, the process is already underway, and I know we're doing a study, but it's been projected it would be nine months. We could possibly, what's the word, do something to the pool, reduce the pool of applicants because of the uncertainty and the instability. And I think that too lends to the lack of being able to move quickly for economic development because of the continued instability. So I just want to put that out there, that I do, I'm still having trouble with the governance piece because it has great implications on the hiring of a permanent director.
All right. Well, I want to thank everybody for coming. David, Phil, thank you for a wonderful presentation. Once again, I want to congratulate the airport for the amazing work that y'all have done and being recognized. David, congratulations for being recognized as well. No further action. We stand adjourned. Regularly scheduled meeting at 4 o'clock.